Okay, everybody who accepts the minutes, please raise your hand. Five and Heather abstains because she was not present at that meeting. Okay, now we have an A and R from Rohi Yawab Awan at 55 Whitmore Road. A parcel, a plan has been admitted by Ms. Awan showing parcel two, which is being combined with parcel one, and the remaining land, which is shown as parcel D. This change is being made so that the driveway for 55 Whitmore is on the same parcel.
Yes, so the plan you have this evening, as you just noted from the description that you read, shows that they're carving off a small piece of land from the remaining land, and it's about thirty-seven and a half, thirty-eight feet of frontage. And the reason for that transfer is, as you can see from the plan, there was a driveway that came in from the remaining land and went up and into the garage. The home is in the process of being sold, and this is to put the driveway on the piece with 55. And I would recommend the board endorse the plan as submitted since it does meet the requirements.
Any discussion?
At what time does that get approved, the driveway permit? Is there any issue with that, or do they already have the driveway permit?
The driveway is already existing. It's an existing paved driveway.
Any other questions? I have a motion to accept the plan as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Six, six to zero. Now we're coming upon the discussion. We're going to discuss the recent Route 15 charrette and poss-
Could you sign?
You want to sign?
I would. I didn't know if I should go now. Okay, just a minute, please. So the A and R is now signed. And during that time, I'd like to welcome our town administrator, Jeff Bridges, to our meeting as well tonight. Okay, and as I began to talk about, we're going to discuss Route 15 and the proposed zoning amendments. We're going to discuss the outcome of the charrette and potential zoning amendments for the special use district. I know-
Do you like me to-
Yes, go ahead. Please, Jean.
Good evening. So I believe all of you were at the Route 15 charrette. With me this evening is Kevin Filczak, our Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator, which, and I believe that all of you know him as well. So what we've prepared for you this evening is a few things. So you'll have a kind of a compilation of the comments that we received at the charrette and a listing of the questions. As you'll see from our notes, we intended to ask many more questions, but the ones that we did ask took quite some time, so. And I think that it really, we got the information that we were seeking from those couple of questions that we did get out. And then you'll also have a draft or marked up version of the zoning bylaw that we've just inserted really some of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission's recommendations. And there are some areas where Kevin and I disagree with their recommendations. And then a couple of additions we've put in on our, on our own. And then you have my report, and what this did is it broke the CMRPC report down a little further. Because at the charrette, we kept hearing, "Well, what is there really left for land?" And, you know, there's, there's been a variety of studies done. But as we all know, in the course of these studies, things have happened. Pine Lake RV was purchased, or the old Yogi Bear campground was purchased, and he's investing millions of dollars down there now. The long, empty Hebert Candy was sold, and it's Pa Plaza Doggy Daycare and Spa for your pets and training. And so, and then the nine-acre parcel that was also owned by the Heberts has recently been transferred to Old Sturbridge Village. And I'm not entirely sure what their plans are yet for that property. But a lot of things have taken place that have kind of changed what we look at as the developable land area. And we could say, "Well, in the future, that may change," and that's true. But with the amount of money that's being invested in some of these properties now, I don't see that, nor does Kevin, changing overnight. So we just kind of wanted to put that in perspective of what's really left. So we broke it down the same way that CMRPC broke down their report. And stop me if you want to jump in at all.
No, you're doing good.
Okay. So we broke this down really the way CMRPC did. So the first one is the central portion. And as I noted, that's the, you know, the former Hebert Candy, One River Road. It's the Pine Lake RV, it's Nine River Road. And so out of, excuse me, all of the parcels that were noted in that plan, only Six River Road and 150 Route 15 remain vacant. So the CMRPC report had that listed as 12 acres, but it's actually four and a half acre, just under four and a half acres. So for 140 Route 15. And then Six River Road is 2.36 acres. So out of the entire central portion, we really only have around seven acres that are remaining in that area. And that doesn't, we haven't subtracted out wetlands or any other, you know, topography constraints or soil constraints, anything like that. So just at face value, we have around seven acres. So if you recall, for a planned unit business development, you need 50 acres. Or that can be reduced to special permit to 25 acres by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So if I look at the central, I say PUBD is really not providing any value as a zoning tool in this area. So then we'll move a little further down the corridor. And so the next set of parcels is by the Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative. So that map is on page three. A little hard to see. I cut these and pasted them right from the CMRPC report, so I apologize for the quality. But you'll see the 40-acre site is the Pine Lake RV Resort that we previously talked about. The 20-acre parcel at 26 Kelly Road has since been sold to the Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative. And so that could be used for future expansion for the retirement park. And then Mr. Galanick still owns a parcel, and that's 13.92 acres. And that is shown on the map as 200 Route 15, and that is still available for development. The other parcel that Mr. Galanick owned is now the solar array, the Borrego Solar Array that we recently approved. And then finally, there's a parcel here noted over 30 acres. And that's owned by Joan and George Berry, and their home is actually there. And I'm not sure that they have any interest in developing that at this time. Potentially in the future, it could be available. So we'll just say potentially in the future, there could be one piece of land in that whole section that could potentially meet the PUBD of 25 acres. Oh, you clicked. I thought you were showing me something.
Nope, nope, just clicking.
Okay. Just making sure. Okay, no, sorry, just making sure. And-
Jean, could I ask a question?
Of course.
I don't see on here where Mr. Patel's-
That's in the Historic Commercial District, so it's further up this way. And it's about two and a half to three acres.
So that wouldn't be part of this program, then?
Not unless we decided to make changes to the Historic Commercial. And we didn't really hear any of that at the charrette. We kind of laid out the maps of the entire corridor. And when we asked people, you know, what they were most concerned about, it seemed people were more focused, they would like to see something happen there, but not necessarily to change the zoning. Because then you'd be looking at other properties up here as well.
Right.
So. So if we look at that, there's potentially two parcels that could maybe meet PUBD, even if you reduced it to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission's recommending either eliminating the PUBD or reducing the acreage to 20 acres. Personally, I don't feel that there is any benefit to even reducing it to 20 acres because then it's just potentially the one parcel owned by the Berrys that could be developed. So I really don't see a lot of benefit in that. And our recommendation, Kevin and I, we would recommend that we enhance the Special Use District, Chapter 14, by including some of the uses that we consider to be appropriate for the area and allow them to take place on the minimum lot size in that district. So if it's an acre, then let's find some uses that are reasonable. Obviously, some, some parcels are larger than that. But let's make it more attractive to develop using the land that we have with uses that are kind of favorable and won't be a huge impediment to all of the residential neighborhoods that we have there. Because we actually do have quite a bit of residential. So we have the condominiums, we have the Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative, and we have the new homes that are being built across the street at the old Pocket Farm. That was recently split up as you head toward Lead Mine. So we didn't really know how the board felt about that, so we wanted to have that discussion this evening. And I think if we get a handle on how people feel about the PUBD, it can better inform our work on Chapter 14. We can start to look at lot size requirements, setbacks, coverage, things like that. But the other thing, you know, we've heard this a lot, and we took a stab at it. I think maybe back in 2005, we changed the commercial recreation facility definition. So we loosened it up a little. But as you know, it listed, it said, "Use is limited to." Well, recreation changes at like the drop of a hat. So we just had an escape room that we approved not too long ago. To me, that's recreation. Who would have thought of that five years ago? Who would have thought of, you know, the ropes courses and zip lines and rock climbing walls and things of that nature? So what I've proposed here is two definitions to use as a starting point. And this is largely lifted from the American Planning Association Dictionary. We've enhanced it a little bit. We've looked at what other people had. And so we've kind of given you a mashup of a variety of different decorations, definitions. So the first one for indoor commercial recreation facility would be any establishment whose main purpose is to provide the general public with an amusing or entertaining activity. Uses may include, but are not limited to, arcade, arena, art gallery, art studio, art center, assembly hall, athletic and health clubs, auditorium, bowling alleys, exhibit halls, gymnasium, museum, performance theater, pool or billiard hall, skating rink, swimming pools, tennis facilities, trampoline parks, and other similar uses. Such facilities may also provide other regular, organized, or franchised events, such as children's amusements, dance studios and instructions, music school and instructions, martial arts studios and instructions, and similar type uses. May include accessory uses such as snack bar, restaurant, retail sales, or sports-related health or fitness items and other support facilities. And that came largely from, if you remember a few years back, this board actually approved the arena, which was to be an indoor soccer facility with trails and, you know, other rock climbing walls and things of that nature. And when we looked at that, we said, you know, what would be normal to have? Well, it would be probably normal to sell some of the gear. It would probably be normal to sell some refreshments and things like that. So in crafting these definitions, we took that into consideration. And something that the town as a whole, I believe, was already comfortable with those type of activities there. So we would recommend, one change would be to allow the commercial recreation facility. CMRPC saying, just with site plan, and I think that is adequate. That can be up for discussion, whether you want to do a special permit or a site plan on that. But I think that we need to change the definition. And then you'll see, I also gave you a definition for outdoor commercial recreation facility. And this is a recreational facility conducted for commercial purposes and primarily outside of a building with any of the uses included in commercial indoor recreation. And also including uses such as athletic fields, miniature golf, oop, miniature golf comma, batting cages, equestrian centers, and other similar uses. May include accessories such as snack bar, restaurant, retail sales, or related sports, health, or fitness items, and other support facilities. May not include motorsports, go-karts, or other motorized commercial activities, firing ranges, or similar uses. And there may be a better way to word that. But we've had so many complaints about 508 in Charlton that I didn't want to get into this situation with so many residents living in that corridor. So we might want to give that a little thought. But our intent was, we don't want a lot of things making noise so that people can't enjoy their homes on the weekends or in the evenings when they're home after working all day. Or, you know, we have a retirement park there, too, so people are there during the day. So I just don't think it's fair to disrupt people living in their homes with something like that. So, so those would be two of our recommendations. Do you have anything to add?
No, I would just say that, I would just add on and just say the, the advantage to any of these commercial rec facilities is that, you know, we always consistently talk about what's that other thing here in town? You go to O'Shea, you go to the restaurants, but there's, we need something else to keep people here in town. And to have a facility like that, I know the facility that was proposed back in 2010-ish, you know, could have had some of that val, you know, value added to the town, which could, you know, trickle out into the, you know, restaurants, the hotels. So I think there's value, a lot of value to adding these uses and, and to consider that.
I have a question. Kevin, when you're talking about 2012 or 10, is that what you were talking about? As far as the-
The arena?
The arena.
Arena and the connoisseur.
Exactly, but it was-
But it, so it was-
Isn't that, it was right around when the recession kind of was just starting, I believe.
But it was back.
Yeah, so.
It was a ways back.
Yeah.
Around 2010. Okay, thank you.
You said that this is a working process, not a final product. But I would like to suggest, consider putting "may slash shall not include motorsports." And leave that as a reminder for something to be worked out. But frankly, I think I would root on the strongest side. I prefer "shall not."
Right.
Can be remained to be discussed.
I think "shall not" is, the stronger the better, as far as I'm concerned, on the prohibition. Because I think that, you know, I don't think anybody sitting in this room would be in favor of that. And I'm not sure the voters at town meeting or the Board of Selectmen would be either. I mean, you know, as you know, we've been dealing with the 508 situation. I was attending all the meetings in Charlton for the town administrator and reporting back because there were so many people that were concerned. And we were fielding so many calls. And nothing against 508, I just don't think that we want that type of zoning down on Route 15.
Nor do we have the space.
Right, exactly. We really don't. So, so thank you, Jim. And then you'll see on the Chapter 14, the marked up bylaw that we gave you. If we could just go over a couple of things. And then maybe I'd like to hear from everybody on the board, see what your thoughts are about the PUBD, about the definitions, and about the direction that you see us going with the bylaws. There, are there other things that you think we should include or exclude? So if you look at Chapter 14, and hopefully the change is printed out in blue on all of your copies. So you'll see in the permitted uses, we're proposing adding G, commercial recreational facilities, and public recreational facilities. So the commercial would be actually indoor and outdoor. We wrote the definition after this. CMRPC had recommended light industrial warehouse and distribution, and I do not agree with that. I think it's contrary to what our charge was from this board and the Board of Selectmen. And I also don't think it's necessarily a great fit with the parcels that we have left being surrounded by residential. We're both open to feedback on that.
Yeah, I would echo what Jean's saying. The advan, warehouse for all of the, you know, advantages it has is in essence, we're talking about a box that is used for storage and employs some people, but it's not going to be a massive economic driver. If you have the, the commercial rec facilities or something to that effect that brings in people who then can spill out into the local economy, that's a lot, that's a much better value added for the community. Again, nothing against warehouses, but just for the corridor and for what we want to see happen in Sturbridge, those commercial facilities are probably going to be better in the long run.
Another, another point on that, too, is a lot of those are overnight activities. Where housing is so that the product gets out the next day, the next morning. And if anybody spends two minutes in that area, we, there's so many trucks down there now. It's an issue that the town's going to have to take up with overnight parking along Route 15. That, just to add to that would be, I think, really detrimental to the people that live closest to that area. It's bad enough for myself that I live fur, further away from it, but it is, it's really difficult at times.
Right.
So I think that's a, and I think too, you know, not to say that the CMRPC, but I think if they came and actually saw the property, I think they'd understand a little bit better how closely all these little residential portions back up to these things. And I, I think it would be hard for the, the local people, as you indicated, Jean.
I think so. They're just in such close proximity now. A few years diff, a few years back, I may have felt differently because there was a potential to have a great deal of land, especially where we weren't sure what Yogi Bear was going to do at the time. But now seeing all that come and, you know, so you're not only going to have the residents, but you're going to have the people that are camping there, you know, all season long from the end of April through the end of October is their goal. And it's really going to be a Class A beautiful facility. And we want people to keep coming back, not say they're not coming back because they were so distracted by the noise from go-karts or trailer trucks. They're going to hear some highway noise. There's no way around that because of our location. But, you know, that's kind of can be a low bin in the evening, more, you know.
One thing that was brought up at the table I was at, which I don't know what we can do about it as a town, but, you know, our Town Common is not getting any larger. And we have many, many more activities on the Town Common than we used to have. And one person made the suggestion of an alternate location in this area to use for town activities and even making it a recreation site, you know, because we really don't have much for children. A splash pad, things like that, where they could actually use it as an alternative site for recreation in that area. And I think a lot of people would use it. And of course, you know, you, right now, there's no parking for folks that if you were going to do, it's difficult on the Town Common and other locations. And this would, if we designated, wouldn't have to be a lot of parking, but it would make a difference to people that could take their kids, put them in the car, run down there, and, and have a really nice recreational area would be a great idea, I think, also.
As someone who plans a fair amount of activities on the Town Common, I, I can say that, I, I hear your, your concerns. And actually, that one of the, I believe that person's comment made it into the notes. Again, it all goes back to that idea of what, you know, what is going to draw people into the community in having a, a location, whether it's a, a commercial facility or a, a town-owned facility. As long as it's drawing people into the community, that's, that, that's the value added. If it's a commercial property where we can get property tax base from it,
Sure.
you know, all the better, but, yeah, so.
Something for everybody.
To go further down that list to the special permits. And you know, and this is up for discussion, whether it should be in the special permits or permitted uses. It's just some thoughts. So we looked at PUBD, and we thought, given the acreage that's left, would any of these make sense just as standalone? And I think that quite a few of them would. So we already had hospital or medical treatment building. We may not have enough land area for a hospital, but we still have enough land area for a medical treatment building. And why not then add executive offices, laboratories for research and development, which are pretty quiet, innocuous uses that can bring some really good jobs to town? Or, and professional and medical offices. And, you know, so maybe all these offices should be up in the permitted uses, and maybe the recreational should be down in the special permit uses. Because, you know, offices, we know, we're going to have a building, we're going to have employees. It's very easy to calculate the traffic impact. You know, so maybe it's switched around where commercial recreation, you could have potentially a lot more traffic or, you know, more site disturbance or things like that to create, you know, a miniature golf or something like that, where you have more stormwater and, well, you do with an office building as well. But just something to think about as we go along. But, you know, perhaps the board has some ideas of other things, but those are what we garnered out of the existing PUBD. So I think, you know, for this evening as a starting point, I would say our recommendation is to eliminate the PUBD, to consider amending the definitions for indoor and outdoor recreational uses, to consider adding some of these permitted uses to Chapter 14 Special Use District, and really think some more about which ones really need to be special permit and which ones can just be site plan approval. Because, you know, we do have a really good site plan bylaw, and we do review, you know, everything from soup to nuts with the traffic and the stormwater and the lighting and the trash removal. You know, we do a really good job of reviewing site plan landscaping requirements. So, you know, maybe we're comfortable doing that. But it's something that we'd like you to give some thought to. But for this evening, I think those are our recommendations as a starting point. And we'd like to hear some feedback from you so that we can take this to the next step of maybe, you know, kind of synthesizing this, creating a more cohesive working document and considering some of the lot size requirements based on what your feedback is this evening. And then we'll have that ready for the next meeting.
I have a question for you. If we did remove that PUBD specification, I mean, that would obviously do away with the lot, the minimum requirement lot sizes and all that. Does that make the most sense as far as developers coming in or things along that nature? I mean, is it, is it, is it more challenging for them to get a, a special permit versus a traditional one, if you will?
So the difference is, PUBD is a special permit category all its own. So if you look in the, and I guess you're right, I'm sorry. I should have given a little more background with two newer members. Sorry about that. I'll back up. So planned unit business development, if you look at Chapter 14, that is one of your special permit uses. So if you had 50 acres or 25, you could go to Chapter 15, and it would tell you that if you had a mixture of all of these different types of uses, you could apply for a special permit to do this mixed development. So no, so this was adopted in 1998. Nobody's ever used it, which tells you that it was a little challenging to use. It had some significant setbacks and buffer requirements. And I think the mixture of uses, nobody was able to get the right mix of uses that would be compatible and that would rise to this PUBD level that could be approved. So that's, I guess, part of the, the first question. So then I think your question was really eliminating the PUBD, I don't think will impact anyone because it does not appear there's sufficient land area to do that type of development. So the proposal to take some of those uses and put it into Chapter 14, now I think your question is, what's the difference between special permit and site plan? So site plan should never be used as a tool to deny anything. It should be used as a tool to perfect a plan. So when you need site plan for something, you're saying this use is permitted in this zoning district, but you have to meet these performance standards. zoning district, but you have to meet these performance standards. So we need an adequate stormwater management plan. We need a traffic plan. If you can't meet one of those, then you go back and you fine tune. You reduce the scope of your project, you make a bigger parking lot, you add more catch basins, whatever it may be. A special permit, you have, although our criteria is very similar in special permit and site plan. A special permit can actually be denied. It's a discretionary tool, a discretionary approval tool of the planning board, really. So you can't just deny it because I don't like it, and he's wearing purple shoes tonight, but you can say, you know what, I realize you've tried over and over and over again to satisfy the traffic, and you've proposed all this mitigation, but we as a board do not feel that you've met the standard. And for that reason, we are going to vote to deny your application. That's just giving you one example. So it gives you things that you can use to deny a project if it needs to be denied. Where site plan, like I said, it's not a tool to deny, it's a tool to perfect a plan, usually. And that's kind of the difference. So times when you might want a special permit, if I were doing a motocross, I'd certainly want a special permit, because then you could have, you know, noise standards and things. You know, some recreational uses can be very innocuous, and others might need a little more scrutiny. But if you were doing, say, a ropes course and rock climbing, well, it's probably not really going to bother anybody as long as you meet the standard. So that's probably easily could be a special, excuse me, site plan, site plan approval. So, did I answer?
Yep, no, perfect.
Did I help, or?
Thank you.
Does anyone have any thoughts on the direction that we're trying to go, or?
I mean, I think the direction makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think I'd be in favor for eliminating the, the P U B D based on what I've heard in past meetings and even at CMRPC. Definitely feels like it's somewhat of an outdated restriction on property. So I'd be in favor of that, and I think probably as a next step, probably really looking through these uses and, again, determining which one should be permitted, which one should be either a site plan review or a special permit makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
And I think the changes to the recreational definitions make a lot of sense as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you headed in the right direction, took a lot of the comments from that, Sharet, and, you know, and incorporated it into this document. And I, I agree wholeheartedly with you on eliminating the light industrial warehouse. I think a lot of the discussion at our table was mainly what you said, but also the intersection down here, which, I mean, is, you guys see it more.
Yes.
I hear about it, you guys see it.
Yeah.
You know, trouble with this intersection with trucks and everything. But the other, the other issue that hasn't been broached yet tonight was, that came up, at least at our table, was the infrastructure on the road.
Right.
I mean, we got, now we got three separate wastewater treatment plants within a mile of each other.
Mm-hmm.
We got four public water supplies within a mile of each other. And I, you know, I, as, I can agree with the changes and, and getting, maybe even eliminating the P U B D, but, you know, again, it, it falls back to that infrastructure of not having it. It's, it's a huge restriction to whatever we do. Whatever we do, it could, you know, obviously, what's there now isn't working, but, you know, and I don't know what the right answer is for that, but, I mean, we may be past being behind the eight ball because of all the other treatment plants that are in there. It's going to be cost prohibitive now.
Right.
But I mean, you know, ten years ago, you know, if we had some foresight and, you know, all these people that are building these plants, you know, what they're building the plants for, and what it's going to cost to maintain them, it would have ended up cheaper for them to, everybody to get together to run the infrastructure and, you know.
Yeah.
I, I understand that, I certainly don't disagree with it. But at this point in time, where there is such a limited amount of land there, to even consider putting in public wastewater and water out there, I think is cost prohibitive for the town.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Absolutely. This property, there's a lot, properties that's been for sale on that area for a long time. Has, has any movement or anybody ever made a proposal of any activities down there? I mean, I, that they have, and?
Propane offloading facility to tap into the high pressure line. The Galonic property has seen some activity with people wanting to do, you know, more of a standalone warehousing type of proposal. Recently, somebody contacted us about putting storage units down there, which are allowed in our industrial zone, but not down there. It's been mostly those type of things. Warehousing comes up a lot. Like I said, the people that want to tap into the natural gas line to do the offloading, like the liquefied natural gas, I think much smaller scale than what's happening in Charlton right now, but something very similar.
I just wondered, because there's a lot of walkers on that road, so great, because there's not that much traffic.
Right.
You know, except for local people. So there, you know, that's a consideration, too, for the people that live there, do use the road as a, all the way up, as you know, all the way up to Town Hall, that whole corridor is pretty, pretty well used for walkers, all during the weekend, weekends, you know.
Yeah.
So I agree. I think that, I think we need to, I would definitely agree about taking the warehouse information out, and I would, I, I don't really, and maybe you can explain it, I really don't understand how the, did anything ever happen with the planned unit business development? Did anybody ever?
No.
It was all done and never used, huh?
No.
So I guess we wouldn't miss it if we didn't have it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I fielded an awful lot of calls about it, about, you know, somebody that wants to do one thing.
Right.
But it's not a mix of uses, you know?
Right.
And it was mainly, like I said, the natural gas thing, the warehousing.
Right.
I would have to say, in terms of, you know, from a business friendliness standpoint, and I, and I don't like the term, you know, business friendliness at all, Jean can attest to this, but I, I do think if you removed that, it would be looked favorably upon by, by businesses who are looking at it and saying, look, this is, you know, you're still maintaining the strict codes that you want for the community to see the growth that you want, but at the same time, you're making it available to be developed at some point if that opportunity arises.
And I think the idea of adding in some standalone uses, so I, you know, I think that it's very important that we think about, you know, we don't want to compete against ourselves, so to speak. So we already have a really good restaurant district. You probably, I mean, we don't have the infrastructure to support it, but you probably wouldn't want that as a restaurant district. But you might want, oh, that was other things that I added, I'm sorry, they were in my notes and they never got on here, but brewery and distillery, we had talked about those because we had talked about one even for One River Road. But you may want that to become, you know, an area where you can go take a tour through a distillery, buy some of their product, maybe have a tasting room. The same with a brewery. I mean, we have a few in town, and I think that they feed off of each other. A lot of times, there's these, I don't want to call them pub crawls, it's not really what it is, but, you know, kind of the brewery tours where you're hitting a variety of different breweries in the area. So I apologize for leaving that out. I was marking up another version, and I didn't have a chance to type everything in. But, you know, why couldn't that become an area where you could, there could be some kind of entertainment venue that you're going to, or maybe you're, you know, maybe you're there with your children, your older children are bringing the kids to the ropes, ropes courses, and maybe you're, I'm not suggesting anyone drive after taking these samples, maybe this is coming out wrong, so I'll probably quit while I'm ahead, but it would be nice to have things, you know, for adults to do in the evening, too. So, you know, maybe you're camping, and, you know, the kids are settled in for the night with the older kids, and now, in very close proximity to where you're staying in the campground, or even at the public house, you could maybe walk to another venue where it gives you something to do in the evening, or just something else to consider. But I think, so where I was going with that is, we have a lot of great hotels, and we have a lot of fantastic restaurants. We want to be careful that we're not competing, we want to complement what we have. So when I think about this, I was thinking about, you know, what do we have, or what are we lacking? So we're kind of lacking family activities, we're lacking evening activities, you know, for lack of a better word, we don't have any kind of nightclub or any kind of use like that where you can go in the evening. You can go to the restaurants, and you could maybe have a drink or listen to some entertainment, but there's not really a venue to go where you can just do that and, you know, enjoy. So I think, you know, when we're thinking about this, and if you have any ideas, you know, shoot me an email, or give me a call, drop me a note. Kevin and I will continue to work on this list, and, you know, if, as long as the board is thinking we're heading in the right direction, we'll keep going in this direction. You know, in the Holyoke Mall, they just opened an entertainment place, and they have all different kinds of activities from the little kids on up. So they have, it's kind of like a big arcade, but they have like those, you know, those rooms that little kids jump into, all those plastic balls, and they disappear from the face of the earth for a little while. And, you know, there's kind of a variety, so you can go there with your whole family, and there's something for the little ones to do and the older ones to do, and, you know, I think we need to think about things like that, you know, but how can we attract it? I think that's Kevin's job.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with everything that you were just saying. I think that what's going to be key is, is finding that, that item, that, that thing that's going to keep people here, you know, longer. We talked about in a recent, the First Impressions program we did a while back, I don't know if you had a chance to read that, but one of the things that they talked about, that we talked about for our other community up in Williamstown, was the fact that both of our communities, our town kind of closes down by around five o'clock. And it's the idea of saying, you know, granted, you can go eat, you can go drink, great, but what's the other thing? What's that entertainment value? What's that family thing that you can go do? You know, can you drop your kids off at the ropes course, then you go see a, a local musician, whatever it is? That's going to add the value to Sturbridge that we really need to keep people here longer, to keep the spend here in Sturbridge, to keep them spending an extra night, which is going to go to our hotel motel tax. It, it all trickles out.
And then you'll notice that, you know, we're not putting all of our eggs in one basket, so we know the planning board and the Board of Selectmen wanted us to focus on entertainment and recreation. But we also thought it was important to keep the things like the research labs and offices and things, because, you know, we don't, what we don't want is to develop a bylaw that sits here until 2028. The last one was done in nineteen ninety-eight. So, you know, we also want to think about some of these standalone uses that could fit on the parcels we have, that won't be very impactful to the residents, that could potentially provide some jobs as well. So, you know, think about that as, as you're thinking about things, you know. There's, you know, offices, they, you know, look, when I look back to Sturbridge Coffee House, when she was doing all those little, like, offices in the rooms in the inn, and how quickly they filled up. And so here it was a coffee shop with all these, really incubator space. So, you know, maybe we think outside of the box, and we think about adding some of those types of uses, too. You know, we always talk about, I mean, for me and for Kevin, I know, we want to fill the buildings we have first, and we want to develop the green areas separately, or second, I should say. So, but right now, our vacant areas are pretty well filled.
I think, right now, I think we only have twenty-four vacant buildings that are currently posted online that I've seen.
Right. And a lot of those have challenges as far as, you know, being able to add the sprinkler system, or make them handicap accessible, or add the accessible restroom. So, you know, I think we have to be realists about what we can develop and what we can attract, and, you know, luckily, we have Kevin to help with some of that now, where in years past, we didn't. We, you know, it's like a one-armed paper hanger, that you can only do so much. But, you know, this is the direction that we would like to go. We welcome your feedback and your input so that we can make this into, hopefully, a really great bylaw that will see some development occur in that corridor.
I have a follow-up to Heather. When she talked about everyone, you know, there is a lot of pedestrian tra, traffic on fifteen.
There is.
A lot of it. And a lot of towns around us have received grants for sidewalks, et cetera. And so I'm wondering, wouldn't it be terrific to start out possibly putting a beautiful sidewalk down fifteen?
So that is on our Complete Streets Plan, and I, I need to set up another meeting with Jeff and Butch Jackson, our DPW director. But we have our prioritization plan has been approved by the state, and if you recall, we did include Route fifteen. But I think Cedar Street is scoring higher on the line. But I will say, too, about this, about Route fifteen, it's such a wide corridor, there's no reason why you couldn't stripe a pedestrian lane. There's so many communities that are doing that now. They're striping what they call a sharrow, which is, if you remember from the Commercial Tourist District Plan, it's a shared lane for bikes and for pedestrians. So why couldn't we stripe a sharrow? I mean, it's a huge right-of-way, and right now, we require a hundred-foot setback from that. I mean, that's a huge swath of land. I'm not even sure we need the hundred-foot setback, given what's left to be developed down there. But there's a lot of room. We could actually do something to make it at least feel safer. If you paint those lines, I mean, it's not like having a barricade, but a sidewalk's not a barricade either.
People are comfortable with sidewalks.
Well, right.
Driving into Brimfield can make you crazy today compared to what it was, okay? A change is difficult for all of us.
Yes.
To some extent.
Right.
But I think the presentation of a sidewalk
Yeah.
With the granite curbing, I mean, they're beautiful.
Well, they are, but I would say, I would say, consider this. Walk down Route twenty on the sidewalk with the telephone poles in the middle, and get, try to go around them and walk down Route twenty, as I do very often, or come down here.
Have that on fifteen.
Or come down here and walked in a striped lane. And I, I can assure you, I would probably feel safer in the striped lane than I do on the Route twenty sidewalks, and I walk this corridor a lot, too, at lunch.
I hear you, but the, because the, the telephone poles going down fifteen, I can't recall.
They're not there.
They're not there.
They're bad.
So we could do, we could do the walkway.
Oh, you definitely could. And I'm not saying we don't, right.
Downtown is a, that's a mess with the, with the telephone poles.
And don't misunderstand. I'm not saying that we don't do that. I'm just saying, until we can get to that point that we can afford to do that, or get the grant to do that.
Grant.
Why couldn't we stripe it in the meantime?
I want grants in this town.
I know you do.
I really want grants in this town, because they're appearing everywhere but this town.
Well, I wouldn't say that. We just got a nice Green Communities grant for a hundred and forty-six thousand.
I know that. I don't mean in general. I'm talking about for the streets.
For the streets, yeah.
And for the walkways.
Because you need to have a shovel-ready plan. So they've changed the criteria that your plans need to be shovel-ready to be able to get those mass works grants. So doing the Complete Streets prioritization plan was the first step in that. So we're heading in the right direction. It just takes time.
But there are deadlines, like, to be considered. And the faster we move on some of these things, the more realistic it is to even think about the possibility of getting a grant.
Yes.
And so I just don't know where we are in that Complete Street project.
So our prioritization plan was approved, and so, as I said, Jeff, Butch, and I need to meet, and, you know, the Cedar Street ranked up the highest, so I would think that's the first one that we're going to look at, see what we need to do for planning to get that to shovel-ready, which also takes funding just to get the plans ready. So, you know, we have lots and lots of projects that we want to do, and in my mind, as much as this would be great, I, I'm still going to throw the striping out there, because it's not going to get the amount of use that we are on Cedar Street, heading toward the rec area or the schools right at this moment. So if I have to rank them, I'm going to rank where are people walking right now on the most dangerous areas. And Cedar Street's very narrow, and we do get a lot of walkers walking up to the recreation area, and it's in a densely developed area. So I don't disagree that we need it on Route fifteen, we just can't do everything in one shot. Be great if we could.
I know. But I'm thinking of fifteen, and fifteen is, it's, children walking on fifteen doesn't occur, because it's not, I mean, not on fifteen, on Cedar, because it's not safe. And do you think?
Oh, I think it's different with you.
They walk on it all the time.
A lot of little ones?
A lot of them, yes.
Kids on the bike, skateboards, going up to the, up to the rec area.
Up to the rec area all the time.
Oh, in the summertime, there's kids all the time on Cedar Street.
Really?
Yeah, and it's really narrow.
Well, that's different, that's changed.
Yeah.
That is very dangerous, and that does need attention.
That's why, in my mind, that rises to the level.
Mm-hmm.
I walk on fifteen a lot. There's very little traffic there, and most of the way, there is And most of the way, there is an eight-foot wide section that is a solid line. I wouldn't do anything out there. It's not necessary.
Just keep up the striping. I mean, just make sure it's maintained.
Right.
Makes a difference. Do we need to do anything else on this for now?
No, I just want to know that you're comfortable with where we're going, that, you know, I don't like to work on something for a few months and then just say, oh, how'd you come up with this?
Yeah, right. Another thing, I'm thinking, the building, the professional building that's now on Route 20.
Yes.
Um, are there any more tenants planning on coming in there?
Yes, so the Harrington Medical Offices are in there and an insurance company is doing a fit-up in there right now.
Okay, but that still leaves a lot of area.
So if it appears in six thousand and thirty thousand's worth of building, how much is it?
It's about forty-three thousand square foot and... Oh, for the insurance. I don't, they're taking a big piece of it. I couldn't tell you offhand how many square feet, but they're taking a big piece of it. So I believe there will be a little bit of space, but not a ton.
Yeah.
So what's the next step for this in terms of, I mean, this eventually will have to go to town meeting, right?
Eventually has to go to town meeting.
Are we looking at a town meeting next year then?
Next year, because our town meeting's Monday.
It's Monday, yes.
So we can't quite get it done. So what has to happen is we have to develop a bylaw that the planning board can feel comfortable being the petitioner for. Um, but also, when we get a draft, we'll ask the Board of Selectmen to have a joint meeting with us to review because this was, you know, kind of a joint project. It was one of their goals as well, that they wanted this reviewed. So we'll meet with them, make sure everybody's comfortable with where we're going. And then if so, um, no more than six months prior to the town meeting, the planning board will need to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation on this. And then it goes to town meeting and requires a two-thirds, uh, vote to pass.
Will we, as a planning board, um, make the decision about Chapter 15, whether it's needed at all?
You will make the decision to be the petitioner for that change. So yes, we will still need to hold a public hearing. It will still need to go to a town meeting. So it could be defeated at town meeting, but I'm not sure. So if the worst case.
Because of the, the fact that it's no longer useful.
Right, and so the worst case is it gets defeated at town meeting and it stays in there. But we've also enhanced Chapter 14, so hopefully it gets used.
So does that put us in that predicament again where one doesn't pass and the other one does, or?
Yeah, well, if, like I said.
We went into that with something else.
We did. That was when I had taken language out of, um, one section and made the parking chapter. So and council said, Gene, if this doesn't pass, you don't have any parking standards. But in this case, if this doesn't pass, it doesn't really matter. It stays on the books. Nobody can ever use it. They don't have enough land and it's there. So it doesn't really, so I would hope it passes, but if it doesn't, no, it's not gonna impact us. Right, exactly, exactly.
But doesn't it also?
Was putting us in a predicament.
Right, so I do know now to order those warrant articles appropriately. So if one fails, we can get up with a substitute motion to table it, so.
But didn't you mention that this is causing some confusion with businesses when they get in touch with you?
For the P U B D? Oh, definitely.
Right, so if we could eliminate it, it would be most helpful.
And if we could add some permitted uses as standalone, maybe you would actually see something happen down there. Whether it's recreation or staying on those office lines or labs.
I was just thinking of the spaces that we do have. And, but leave it open, it doesn't change anything. Okay. Any other questions or any points of discussion concerning the charrette, Route 15?
I'm all set.
All set. Okay, now we have Town Planner's Update.
Okay, so.
We do.
This Thursday and Friday, our office will be closed. I'm attending the Mass Planning, Mass Association of Planning Directors Conference that's in North Adams this year. And for your information, there's a community meeting notice for HEAL and they have advertised for their outreach meeting relative to converting their medical marijuana facility into a adult use. So that is being held actually Thursday night, so I won't be able to attend, otherwise I would.
Question about that if I may. There are two adult-use marijuana licenses available in Sturbridge, correct?
Yes, there are two, potentially three, so it depends on the order of things. And this is the discussion that Jeff and I have been having, um, with town council and with the Board of Selectmen. And I expect that, and this was a little further in my update, but I'll just let you know. So we have, our bylaw says that we can have two adult-use retailers because we did that based on twenty percent of our alcohol licenses. But it also says that a medical marijuana facility that was established before a certain date has the right to convert into an adult use. And so if you remember, when we were working on the bylaw and Nicole Costanzo came out from KP Law, she said that if HEAL were one of the first ones to convert, then potentially you only have one additional adult use. That would be your two. However, because HEAL has the five-year restriction on them, if they were the last one to be able to come in, you'd potentially have three. You could have two that come in under the bylaw and then they would still have the ability to convert, so you could have three. So we are, um, have been meeting with proposed adult-use retailers. Um, I've given you the information in the packet, the feedback that we gave to them. And there's one, as you know, looking at 55 Main Street, one at 138 Main Street. One was looking at 214 Charlton Road and they are right now looking at, looking for alternate locations. And then we had HEAL come in to request that their restriction be lifted and that the Board of Selectmen consider them as one of the two. So they met with staff and they also came in and made presentations to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you. And they will be coming back on June 18th and I believe we'll have town council at that meeting as well. And hopefully we'll get some direction from council and from the board. I can say when HEAL came in and met with the Board of Selectmen, although they did not take a vote, they seemed very agreeable to lifting the five-year restriction.
May I ask, I, I, I watched that, um, Selectmen's meeting and I'm just curious as to why they weren't... Maybe I should direct this to our town administrator, if I may.
Sorry, I couldn't understand that, you're curious about what?
I have a que- about, um, the, um, the HEAL medical marijuana facility. On the, there was a discussion at the Board of Selectmen, why we can't just lift their five-year and give them one of the retail licenses and then we'd only have one more shop to have to, um, look at. And there was a delay. And I wasn't sure why and I really didn't understand. And I, 'cause I too saw that the Board of Selectmen were ready to go forward, but there may be something we're not aware of, that it was, that it was, um, held up. And I didn't know if that was something that could be addressed publicly.
It was my recommendation to hold on that lifting of that five-year, uh, restriction. My comments to the board were, let's not piecemeal the host community agreement that we have with them. There may be other elements of that agreement that need to be adjusted as well. And we should look at it as a package rather than just automatically deleting one provision of that agreement.
Okay.
So you want, you wanna look at the whole, the whole agreement as a whole versus eliminating just one little piece of it?
Right, there may be other aspects of that agreement we would like to have.
Right.
So again, this is a negotiation.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And the, and the atmosphere of this whole industry has evolved.
Yes, it has.
So there may be new things that we would include or take out depending upon the entirety of the agreement.
Thank you.
If, uh, two other agencies applied and were granted the licenses, does that mean that HEAL would be held for the five-year period? Or they could, or could they jump in at any time?
I think it depends on the outcome of the negotiations of the host community agreement that they currently have. It seems to us that the Board of Selectmen is inclined to reverse that, but I think that, um, Mr. Bridges would need to work to, with council and with the, with HEAL to renegotiate that agreement and see if the Board of Selectmen is accepting of that.
So the bottom line is if they, if they eliminate that provision of wait in five years, then we will only have two.
We could, so, yes. So really, you need a host community agreement before you can apply for a special permit with us. So the Board of Selectmen could choose to negotiate host community agreements with all of them and then kind of first come, first served when they get over here to planning. Or they could look at these companies and evaluate them and say, you know, we're going to negotiate with this one and this one because we feel this is in the best interest of the community and start with that, and then those are the ones that apply. So those are kind of the details that all need to be worked out as we figure out this process. So right now, we've just been, you know, gathering in a lot of information, meeting with people, trying to guide them the best way. And at the same time, for us, this process is evolving as we go along because we've never done this. So, you know, we're, we're kind of taking it a step at a time in trying to do our due diligence with all of the applicants so that we can make appropriate recommendations to the Board of Selectmen as well.
Thank you.
Um, just a minor note, did you happen to let them know that Sandy, HEAL, that Sandy's no longer with us?
I did, I did, yeah.
Notice that.
I did, I emailed them. And then, um, last but not least, so 179 Main Street, this is, uh, the former ROMs where Teddy G's and quite a few other businesses are located. So this was approved by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, 2012. And it was built and, as you know, occupied and very busy. And when this was approved by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, it was approved with the, the parking lot in the back was to be gravel. And since that time, I'm not exactly sure when, but sometimes this happens. Somebody says, this gravel parking lot's really a pain to maintain or whatever. I think it'll be neater if I pave it or whatever. We, we do see it happen from time to time. So apparently, they put down millings in the back and we were unaware or if I even noticed it, I didn't even think about it. And because as things get built and they're there for a while, you kind of forget. And, um, we just, this year, so it happened in 2012, but it's been an extremely rainy year. So just this year, we started getting complaints about runoff onto Blueberry Lane. And so Becky, the Conserva- Becky Gendrow, our conservation agent, myself spoke about this. And we felt the easiest way to enforce this was through the Conservation Commission acting as the stormwater management authority because they should have filed with Conservation when they, um, added the millings in that proximity to the wetlands. It wouldn't, wasn't anything that would have risen to a notice of intent or anything, but it's really kind of the easiest way to handle it. Why have them come back to two boards when it's really stormwater that we need, um, rectified? So they have been working with Burton Engineering and they provided us with a plan. And Becky and I, um, were trying to review it on our own. We don't have the expertise to do that. We no longer have that expertise, um, at DPW to review our stormwater. So I did speak to Jeff and he has given us the approval to go ahead and have CME, the town engineer, review that plan and make recommendations back. So there is a site visit scheduled for this Thursday. Um, Becky is going out with the engineer from CME to look at the site. And then they are going to provide a recommendation on their review of the plan. So we feel confident that we're headed in the right direction. And I just wanted all of you to be aware because some of you may be getting calls or complaints from people that you know. Just to let, please let them know that we are working on this. And, you know, it, it didn't, I hate to say, it sounds cliche, but it didn't happen overnight and we're not going to fix it overnight. So we are really doing the best that we can to, um, get a handle on this and get it corrected as soon as we can. And we're hoping to have something that the commission can review at their next meeting. That's our hope anyway, so brings you up to date on that one. And that's all I have, other than welcome today.
Is there any old business?
Edwards Gas.
Oh, yes, I can update you on that.
I wish you would, because I've got more com- uh, complaints maybe, or?
No, so I've...
Not the right word, but.
No, so I've been working with Eddie Wahib. I really think it, it looks worse than it is. See, and how you say sometimes, well, things have to look worse before they look better. I kind of think that's the stage that we're at right now. So, um, he did take some trees down in the back and in the process took more down than I expected that they were going to take down. Um, I guess there were a lot of dead or bad trees. And then trying to get the slope to do the retaining wall, they excavated probably more than we had pictured that they were going to. So this week, uh, or last week, excuse me, I met with Eddie and I have, um, he's hired someone to do his stone retaining walls, which the work samples that this person sent are absolutely beautiful. They're nice stacked stone walls that he's doing along the back. I received word today from the Hydro Seeding Company that they are hydroseeding on June 14th, the hillside. And they are meeting with, uh, Mr. Tom Chamberlain Thursday to get his recommendations on what they can replant for trees on the hillside. And then, when he gets this, this site where it should be, then he will come in back to the board for his convenience store. So his architect came in with his renderings for the convenience store two or and a half weeks ago. And I said, I really want to get Eddie into compliance with the site first before we go any further. And not to hold him up in any manner, but I was just concerned about getting too much opened up on that site. So I think we're really headed in a good direction. I think by the end of June, you'll see significant improvements there. And then he'll come back to the board for, if you remember, we laid out, or he laid out the parking lot to accommodate the convenience store, so he'd be coming back for a waiver of site plan and he'd be going to design review for the architectural changes to the building. So I think we are on the...
So piles of brush and stumps and everything?
Will all be removed as he's going ahead and landscaping all of that, yes. And he actually is going to, the garage that was part of the Brogan property, he's actually, they're going to side that because he's going to keep it as a storage shed. So there's actually somebody that is going to be pulling a permit to side that building. So I think that, you know, nothing intentional on his part. I think there was a lot of moving pieces and, you know, things just evolved a little more maybe than I think we had envisioned. So, but I have to say that he's really working hard to try to rectify things. He's had his engineers change his plans. He's lined up the contractors for the walls, the hydroseeding, meeting with the tree warden Thursday. So he's, he's really moving in the right direction.
Question, um, in the back of the property on the right, there's still those two old brown buildings.
Yes.
Are they not on his property?
There's, I'm not sure when you say two old brown buildings, but I know there are two like shed buildings.
Yes, yes.
So those are his and that's what I just mentioned. He's going to be putting vinyl siding on.
Oh.
He's going to keep that to use as a storage shed for the lawnmower and things, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only thing I had, at the, um, at the Panera and Holiday and the sign that was recently erected, based on reviewing the minutes, because I wasn't on the board. Obviously, the sign was approved, it was also reviewed by design review. It looked like there's gonna be brick underneath that being installed at some point, or?
I couldn't tell you without looking at the plan, but I'd be happy to look and send you an email tomorrow.
And then I was just wondering with the other sign that they had, that pre- they had previously put up, is that, is that to come down, I assume?
They took the other sign down. So I was out there Friday on site. Actually, I did a site visit for Panera, checked out their, um, the work that's being done there. And so they've removed the top of the sign. The, what's left is the brick, um, pedestal, but it's all landscaped around that. So they don't wanna pull the pedestal out because they don't wanna lose all of the plantings. So you really can barely see the pedestal with all the plantings that are around it now. So they thought rather than disturb the land, they'd leave that. And I don't really think that's an issue because there, there are so many plantings around it. But I'll check the, um, I don't know that there was a brick pedestal on that.
That's what I saw in the design review.
Was it?
Yeah, so there'd been a lot of residents that were, that had just asked me about it.
Yeah, I can pull the plan, actually, the plan's probably on our website under the design review. We usually put the approved plan, but I'll double-check that and I can, I'll email all of you on that.
I just had one other thing, um, just behind that nice new sign they put up is... I just had one other thing, um, just behind that nice new sign they put up is, is a, was a beautiful Welcome to Sturbridge sign that's now completely blocked, I didn't know if there was any plan to move that, or, um, you know, the nice black.
My sign?
Is that the one?
The black.
There was a nice black one, it looked all fancy, yeah, it's, it's, it's very hard to see now.
Is it really? Oh, my gosh. Well, now.
Just cosmetic.
You really can't see it?
It's much, it's much harder when you're coming down Route twenty.
Okay, I'll look at that. Oh, I had to pull teeth to get DOT to let us put that there, Leon pulled teeth with me.
Gives them a small strip to put everything in, which is kind of tough.
Well, thank you.
DOT needs to do us a favor.
Made my night.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Is it possible, I know that he has a small area of land, and then it's Mass DOT. Is it possible to get a waiver from Mass DOT for signage?
That's what we did, and they denied it in the.
We do it again?
Beginning.
Because everything's changed?
Yeah. I'll have to think about that.
Maybe it's easier to just move the sign.
Forgiveness. The town sign, yeah.
The town sign.
Easier to get forgiveness and permission.
That's, well, I always look, I always work that way, but.
Yes, because we had another beautiful sign, um, like the one that is in front of Old Sturbridge Village that we were planning to put on Route twenty, and they rejected it. They said it would become a projectile if somebody hit it. I don't know.
Ask again, you'll get someone else, you'll get a different answer.
Maybe Jeff will have better luck now that he's here.
You never know.
So every other, you know, town that has a state highway going through it, you see all these nice directional signs, so. I don't know, we weren't well-received.
Well, that's what I mean, try again, cause sometimes someone else will pick up the phone.
Somebody retires.
Or someone retires, yeah.
I'll have to take a look at it, maybe my friends at DPW can help me out. Oh, boy.
Okay. Is that it?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Anyone interested in adjourning, put your hand up. We're adjourned, thank you.